Good morning Wichita, good morning to all of you, welcome to City Hall. We'll call this meeting to order. We will have Councilmember Dalton Glasscock who has been there. So I just wanted to recognize. May we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you please call the first item?
Approve the minutes of the regular meeting, July 15, 2025.
Are there any corrections to the meeting minute? I see none, I move to approve the regular meeting minutes for July 15, 2025. Second motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say aye. We hear Councilmember Glasscock, I believe. So that will be six zero. Ms. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item?
The public agenda allows for up to five speakers. You have five minutes each to address the council. No action will be taken relative to items on the public agenda other than referral to be made for information as necessary. Speakers will please state their name and address for the record. A time clock will display the speaker's remaining time to speak. Order and rules of decorum will be observed. The first speaker today is Matthew Robertson, Downtown Parking for Roadside Providers.
Mr. Robertson? I don't see him here. Can you please call the next individual?
Patricia Harrington, 235 South Young, chronic flooding that needs to be fixed.
Good morning. My name is Patricia Harrington. I own the property at 235 South Young Street. I've owned the property for 42 years and the street, Young Street, South Young, in front of it has flooded for 42 years. And I would like to have that said.
Ms. Patricia, I believe that is in District Number Four, Councilmember Dalton Glasscock's district. Have you contacted Councilmember Glasscock?
I've made an effort and not been able to connect with him.
Councilmember Glasscock, I believe, is on the line. And when he returns, I will make sure that I connect the two of you. Do you, can you please give your, the clerk, your email address and the community service representative as well as Councilmember Glasscock can get back with you?
One more thing, representative, what did you say?
I hear Councilmember Glasscock.
Yeah, I want to confirm that I did hear you and if I can get your email from the clerk, have the clerk send it, I'll make sure that myself and Brooke get back with you as soon as possible, see what can be done.
He said that if you provide your email address to the clerk, he as well as the community service representative, Brooke, will be in touch with you. If you don't mind giving that to the clerk right over there. Thank you, Patricia.
Mayor's staff will follow up as well from engineering.
Civil, just answer.
Thank you, Patricia, thank you. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next individual?
Civil Strom, Central Inspection destroying her house and stealing her things.
Hello there, everybody. I'm here against the city, the Central. The Central inspection came in my house, my old house, November 21st, 2019. I was not there. They broke in my house and took pictures without my permission. I never got any consent of it. And the Metropolitan planning did it too. I would like to know, how can it get by with not telling the homeowner that they took pictures without consent? Broke into the house, which I made a police report that they had broke in. I was very shocked when I got back to, to rest aside once owned. My house was destroyed. They never told me they'd destroy it. And you know what? Energy put semi tires and three limbs in my yard. That's not right. I do not understand why you all pick on me. Number one, there's a lady next door to me, 324 North Walnut. Her name is Joan Brown, has a tree on her roof and she needs her roof done. Why is you not going down there? You were vultures. You were picking on me. My house was a safe haven for kids that were drug infested and alcoholic places. And I sometimes got police people to bring them over when it was nighttime. I've been there for the community. I've been a teacher. I've been election board representatives in 1984 to 2007. So I do not appreciate that. And then you made me pay a mortgage. That's $20,000. And you stole my property. You did not tell me. You stole my property. And I want restitution. I want to tell you, you cannot just pick anybody. You gotta understand, there are some people that don't have the money to fix things. And then you have the nerve to get me a contractor, Strayer and Sons, and they can do the job. And then you have the nerds telling me to go to Fidelity and get a mortgage. It's not your house, it was never your house. It was my house. My house. You went against me. You did not inform me. I told you where I was. You don't inform me, my neighbor. Steve Martinez, but he's deceased. He told me, so I went to Dave Underwood, a Sutter County Commissioner. He's the one who said, go make a police report. And I did. And you know what? I'm gonna charge the Central for breaking in early and taking pictures without my permission. You say you're there for the people, but you're not. You can be voted out, the people that were involved. And that's the way I feel. I feel so upset. You sent me to Mount Carmel Apartments, that was bad. There was drugs and smoke detectors were going off. Uh-uh, that's not right. Then you sent me to Waterwalk and the guy breaks into my apartment. So you don't even understand what the register voters are wanting. You want to pick on people like me? Get me out of the town. Well, I'm not going. I'm here to stay. So get with it. Answer my questions because I'm done. I'm done pussyfooting with you all. I am finished. And the people like Brandon Johnson and Becky Tuttle and Maggie Ballard who's telling me to keep my mouth shut, I'm not keeping my mouth shut. I'm gonna come to this meetings until I get answers. Thank you.
Civil, I know that Councilmember Ballard has tried helping. And she has tried convening individuals.
Yeah. Sure.
Civil, you have visited several times among other council members up here. That did happen before my time. But I have listened to you and I have never encouraged you to not come and speak.
Some people have.
Well, not me. I have never said that.
Some people have.
Okay, you just said I did and that is not true. Councilmember Johnson?
Thanks Mayor, just for the public record, I've never told any citizen not to speak. Everyone has their First Amendment rights, not a curse of them to use it.
You have. You said it at the last meeting. Well, you could do the right.
Please call the next individual.
Rachel Chin, Crown of Town Solution.
That's me. Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi, it's us. Can you unmute? So. My name is Rachel Chin and I'm here today on behalf of myself, fellow artist Owen Davis, my family and the performance arts community of Wichita, to speak for those whose lives have been touched by the Crown of Town Theater. The Crown has been a magical part of my life for three generations. As a child, I celebrated birthdays there with my mom and sister, watching musical productions. That inspired me to one day perform on that very stage, which I eventually did. I have produced my own shows there, taught ballroom and Latin dance with Preston there, that's what I actually do for a living. I have a, I have a dance studio. And I've even brought my young son to concerts in the recent years there. And when I told him the other day that the current owner was threatening to bulldoze the town, he was quite upset as well. So that's three generations of my family that that building is very, very important to. That's not just a building. It is an irreplaceable part of Wichita's cultural soul. The architecture alone is breathtaking. They simply don't build theaters like this anywhere. There have been many in Wichita already that have been taken down. So it's one of the few left standing. The Crown should be on the National Register of Historic Places. Its ornate interior, classic marquee and historic charm are treacherous worth preserving. The Crown has hosted joy, grief, laughter and love since opening in 1928. Can you believe that in three short years it's gonna be a century old? I think that is absolutely amazing and yet another reason we need to do everything we can to keep this building here and alive and well. It brought buzz loads, even the show I used to do, senior citizens from other surrounding cities. I just think that's so cool. How many lives and places it's touched outside of Wichita. It fostered a love of arts and the children and youth in this city through productions and camps. It has welcomed every kind of performance imaginable, dance, music, opera, theater, comedy, burlesque, magic, circus, even professional wrestling and aerial arts. We believe there's a way forward that benefits everyone without tearing it down. We propose that the city of Wichita purchase the Crown and partner with our local artists and producers. Myself and Owen Davis would like to help run it and to operate it as a vibrant community cultural hub. We would program it with nightlife events, school access, youth arts opportunities and performances by both local talent and national acts. Wichita deserves this. Great cities don't just run on business. They thrive through the arts. Civic pride, tourism, education and quality of life all grow when cultural institutions are preserved and supported. One second. Please don't let this piece of Wichita's heart be lost forever. Give us the chance to protect, honor and revitalize it for our past, our present and our future. Thank you guys so much for listening.
Thank you, Rachel. I will only speak on my behalf as one individual on this council. Unfortunately, I don't believe there are funds that the city of Wichita would spend on buying a property because our four priorities are crime streets, economic development and homelessness. And so I'm only speaking on my behalf. I'm gonna stay very focused on those four things. But the other council members may speak on that topic.
I have a question. Am I allowed to respond to your responses at all? Answer no.
Mayor, it's your prerogative as Chair. Traditionally, there's not been a back and forth on items that are on the public agenda.
I see no other council member, not member, who has a.
Thank you for coming up and speaking. I, I will be interested, I kind of agree with the mayor. I don't know that there is the movement to do that. But it's something we can take a look at. But there is a group out there. I don't know if you've connected with them yet, who want to do the same thing, essentially that you're talking about from a private citizen standpoint. And I'd be interested in hearing back from you on this. But we'd be interested in connecting you with them as well to see if there is some potential to collaborate with each other.
I did forget to ask also another, a secondary possible solution. Could the city claim eminent domain on that? And yes, I am aware of the group that's kind of collaborating to possibly look at purchasing. I have actually spoken with the current owner myself, I've had a meeting with him. So, yeah.
I am not sure if eminent domain would even qualify in this scenario. I'm not sure there's a will among council to do that as well. But it's an interesting perspective. I suppose something we can get an answer on. But again, I don't know that there is the desire among council to do something that extreme with it. Thank you.
I see no other council members. Again, thank you for those who have signed up to speak. This is your opportunity to address the council. And again, when the council speaks, they're really speaking on their own behalf. They're all seven of us. And everyone is allowed to give their comments. I know that we had an individual that we called earlier. Is this individual in the room now, Matthew Robertson? I don't see Mr. Robertson, which means we have two more spots for anyone in the community who would like to speak who's here at this moment. I see no one else. Again, thank you for public comment. And anyone is welcome to sign up for public comment and you can always engage with your council members. All of our emails are at wichita.gov/citycouncil. You can also sign up to speak during public agenda, whether at a council meeting ahead of time or as you just saw, if there are spots available, you can still speak. So again, I encourage you to reach out to your council members regarding those topics. Ms. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item?
Consent agenda items one through 15.
Councilmembers, are there items to be polled? I have just one. I would like to poll item 3C regarding transit. With that, I move to approve the consent agenda without item number 3C. Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Madam, sorry, all those in favor say aye. Aye, all those opposed, same sign. I heard Councilmember Glasscock, motion passes, six zero. We'll discuss item number 3C.
Mayor, Council, can you advise the shot transit?
Good morning. Penny, can you just explain what this supplemental agreement will do in regards to the transit plan that was presented to the community earlier this year?
Yes, absolutely. So this next phase basically takes the concepts that we developed during the first phase through public engagement, data analysis, to the implementation phase so we can make it reality. We're gonna do some data gathering to make sure the run times of each route are accurate, not just a concept. And we're going to also implement five main things in this plan. The first being decentralize of the new multimodal facility being built in Delano. Second, we're going to reduce travel times per frequency by operating shorter wait times. We're going to allow aligned routes to major destinations. So that's gonna be colleges, universities, employers, medical facilities. We're going to introduce a new pilot route in South Wichita, which is the Pawnee Connector, which is gonna help the east-west connection on the south side. And then overall, just streamlining existing routes.
Can you tell me a little bit more about route number two oh three? Is that the one Pawnee from West Street all the way to Harry and Oliver, is that correct?
Right, so it would be a pilot route that we would implement next summer to hopefully next, the south side a little bit better.
Thank you, Penny. And lastly, in order for the plan to continue being implemented, before that, what have you seen in terms of some of the routes that I think you've already canceled because of low ridership? Or can you explain what has happened with some of the routes?
Right, so effective August of this year, Route 200 will be canceled. And that serves the east side on Wethen Greenwich primarily. And really, we're just not seeing the ridership that we need to justify that route. So in August of this year, we're gonna incorporate that into Route 21 and Route 22 so we're able to serve the same areas. And it will just take a little bit longer for the bus to get there.
Thank you very much, Penny. Any questions for Penny?
No questions, but just I'm really excited to see how Route 203 works out. It's again connecting the south side from both sides to the east side. So hopefully it's a pilot project, hopefully it's successful. I look forward to seeing that develop. Thank you, Penny, for your work.
I see no further questions for staff. We'll open it up for public comment. I see none, we'll bring it back to the bench. Thank you again, Penny, for your hard work as well as the team and transit in getting us a new transit plan. We're excited to see the new Delano multimodal hub come online next year. And that will help with a lot of the implementation of this plan. So with that, I move to approve consent agenda item 3C. Second, motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
I heard Councilmember Glasscock. All those opposing, same sign. Motion passes, six zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Border Bids and Contracts dated July 21st, 2025.
Sorry. Ms. Bob, I'm getting some text messages about there not being audio. I don't know, to tell.
Apparently, we do have a technical issue that we're trying to work on right now.
Okay, thank you.
Morning. Mayor of City Council, Josh Lawler, Department of Finance. The Border Bids and Contracts, the Border Bids and Contracts meeting yesterday, July 23rd, for the following items. For engineering, we have a list, Station 17 modification for Wildcat Construction Incorporated for $179,700. We have a water main replacement project for Countryside Edition for Phillips Southern Electric Contractors LLC for $1,849,955. We have a storm water system number 811 West 9th Street North in North McLean Boulevard, storm water system repairs for Phillips Southern Electric Contractors LLC for $63,905. We have a 2025 sanitary sewer rehabilitation phase C for Instaform Technologies USA LLC for $256,340. We have the 2025 outsourced pavement preservation program, CIP Concrete Street Repairs Phase 5 for PBJ Construction Incorporated, awarded to the engineers estimate from the original bid of $428,270.50 to $500,000. We have the water distribution system and paving to Serbuklo Pine Edition tie rebid for Mees Construction for an aggregate bid total of $1,775,486.35. For purchasing, we have the waterworks fittings for Wichita Wind Water for $45,316.50 estimated annually for one year with two one-years. We have the roll call annual licensure support maintenance renewal for VersaTerm Public Safety US Incorporated for $55,083.60. We have the access control and video surveillance systems for Recreation Center for Sandifer Engineering Controls Incorporated for $96,056.45. We have the Cisco SmartNet hardware maintenance support renewal for Logicalis Incorporated for $129,146.52. We have the sodium permanganate contract change order for Caris LLC doing business with Condi Holdings LLC for an amended amount of $245,415.20 estimated per year. We have the Waterworks Supplies Group One contract change order for Mountainland Supply Company LLC for an amended amount of $131,888.50 estimated per year. And we have the Root Controls Herbicide contract change order for Duke's Root Control Incorporated for an amended amount of $71,523 estimated each year. And for airport, we have the airfield pavement rehabilitation and lighting improvements for Ambrosi Contracting, excuse me, for $18,619,138. This is how to become a vendor with the city. This is our purchasing calendar of small business resource events with our partners that the city is hosting and participating in, so it's a busy month. This is our open public opportunities out on the street today. And I'd be happy to try to answer your questions and recommend your approval.
Thank you, Josh. Questions for staff? I just have, can you go back to slide number 11?
Sure.
I just wanted to know if the system is going to be integrated into the new real-time information center with WPD?
It's a good question, I don't know. Of course, facilities or IT is on this, but we can get you some information on that, not personally familiar.
The Sandifer is who we've been using for all of our security cameras and other devices that go into that center. I'm gonna make an assumption that we will be tied into the real-time crime center.
And then lastly, since the Brewer Rec Center is getting close to completion, do we have a date for that?
Yep, we're planning the very opening on November the first at Council District One Breakfast. And then we have two, and both, and we'll start on this Monday.
Thank you very much, Reggie, and I'll just reiterate what the director just said. It will be November 1st in collaboration with the District One Breakfast. So we're looking forward to the Brewer Rec Center reopening for the community. Thank you, Josh, and thank you, Reggie. Oh, Councilmember Johnson?
Thanks, Mayor, just to add, that's the best breakfast in Wichita.
I don't know if it's been to drink. It's good.
It was good.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. I see no further questions for staff. I move to approve the Border Bids and Contracts dated July 21st, 2025. Second, motion and a second, any further discussion? Second, motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. All those in favor say aye.
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 I hear Councilmember Glasscock. All those opposing sign. Motion passes six zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Petitions for public improvements.
Hi, Mayor, City Council members, Paul, Gasmont, Public Works and Utilities, for the record. I have a couple revised petitions for your consideration this morning. The signatures on the petition represent 100% of the improvement district, and the petitions are valid per Kansas statute. Twenty Farm Edition located in District Three. On May 7th, 2024, the City Council approved water and sanitary sewer improvements required for our new residential development. The developer has submitted revised petitions with revised budgets to reflect current market conditions. And three fourth edition located in District Four on September 6th, 2022. The City Council approved water, sewer, and paving improvements required for our new residential development. Developer has submitted revised petitions and revised budget to reflect current market conditions. And he has also done some refacing of the development as well to reflect some of the revised budgets. It is recommended City Council approve the revised petitions and budgets, adopt the amended resolutions, and offer as necessary signatures, and I will stand for questions.
Thank you, Paul. Questions for staff? I have one. Can you go to slide number 28? This is the first time I've seen, or very rarely do I see, adjustment that is lower. Are we now seeing costs going below? Are we seeing a better trend now?
No, not necessarily. This one, the developer has revised some of the phasing of it, which has affected the improvements that are needed to be done, so it's a smaller case.
Thank you, Paul. I see no further questions for staff. I move to approve the petition for public improvements.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Councilmember Glasscock said aye. All those opposing sign. Motion passes six zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Councilmember, comments and comments?
Councilmembers, any comments or appointments? Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I would like to appoint Cara Billy to the District One Advisory Board. She is my current appointee to die crab. Since that is inactive, she would like to continue serving.
I move to approve the appointment for District One jab.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Glasscock. All those opposing sign. Motion passes six zero. We'll now move to Councilmember comments. Any comments, councilmembers?
I have my District Six coffee on Saturday from nine to 10 at Evergreen. We usually have a good crowd and some delicious food, so come by. It's just an open forum, so we can talk about whatever we'd like. I hope to see you there.
Thank you. I gave an update on this last week, so I just wanted to follow up and also give some kudos and praises. On Saturday, we had a workshop for childcare, and specifically, it was for McConnell. McConnell has a need, as does the rest of our National Guard, when they come here for training, especially for childcare on weekends. And there's some special training that you have to go through currently in the city of Wichita. There's one provider who has gone through the training and is eligible to provide the training for our U.S. servicemen and women who come to McConnell to protect our national security. And so we had a training opportunity for Sprey CEOs. It was a partnership with the City of Wichita Childcare Licensing, McConnell Air Force Base, and Child Start. Our goal was to have 10 to 12 providers attend, and we had 35 providers attend. And a majority of them have expressed interest in going through the process to become a licensed childcare provider for military. And so McConnell is obviously thrilled with this. And I just want to give a huge shout out to the City of Wichita Childcare Licensing Team, who made sure that they were there to answer all of the questions that the providers had. Even though 35 doesn't sound like a lot, when you go from one to 35, it's huge. So this is really just a game changer. And then on August 15th, we're going to have our next childcare workforce summit. And we're looking forward to having over 100 work sites come to learn about new childcare opportunities and bringing in some national content experts. So just couldn't be more proud of this work and the collaboration within the city. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. I had publicly announced a town hall with the Police Department for this evening. I have moved that for both District One to August 19th at 6 o'clock at the center. Flyers and information will be shared shortly for that, but again, that will end up being August 19th at 6 p.m. Great opportunity to engage with the Police Department and learn more about the work that they are doing. Our district advisory board has been actively wanting to know more as well. So that's what led to calling the town hall and looking forward to having it.
I'll do that one more. There is the deadline to get free barricades provided by the City of Wichita for the Neighborhood Night Out. Wichita's Neighborhood Night Out does not fall under the same day as the National Neighborhood Night Out. So that's a, the reason why is because the primaries are happening that day. Therefore, Wichita's Neighborhood Night Out is August 12th. It's a Tuesday evening. And again, you can find more information at wichita.gov/NNO for Neighborhood Night Out. And again, you can get free barricades. And in addition, if you registered your Neighborhood Night Out, the Police Department, as well as the Fire Department and councilmembers, will be made aware of where those Neighborhood Night Out events are happening. And representatives from those three bodies can attend once we know where they're located. So again, wichita.gov/NNO. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. I did have a question come out from a constituent asking about if the city would advertise individual National Night Out events, maybe run them on their page. I don't know if that's possible or something we've done in the past. Just a question to see. And you guys can get back to us with an answer on that. Thank you.
Probably wouldn't do it individually, but no problem listing all of the events that are registered with us.
Okay, thank you.
I see no further comments. I move to adjourn this meeting. Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. All those in favor say aye.
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 I heard Councilmember Glasscock. All those opposing sign. Motion passes six zero. City Manager Layton, it's now.
Mayor, as you can imagine, we've been receiving a lot of questions regarding the current drought situation, what we're planning on doing going into the future. And so this seemed like a great time for Gary Jansen to brief the council on the current state of our water supply and some thoughts we have about going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Again, Gary Jansen, Public Works and Utilities, Mayor of City Council. Appreciate the opportunity to be here to talk about where we've been, our drought response plan, what our current state is of our public water supply. We want to talk about some of the conditions that got us to the point, the impact in particular that we've had on our surface water supply at Cheney. Looking to the future, what we can best do to protect our overall long-term public water supply. I think that what we've been through for the last few years, I hope, has brought us to a different spot. We've talked a lot about changing our culture, getting forward, and hit on some of those things today to make sure that we're headed in the right direction and looking at long-term conservation efforts. We've done a lot of great things in the last few years. We want to keep it in place. But I want to talk about all of those things. I've got quite a bit to cover. But there's a. Sorry, that was easy enough. Okay. So we provide this information on the dashboard for savichicawater.com. Something I always want to keep out there and mention that it's still a very vital resource for us for a lot of everything related to the drought, public education, proper watering, things like that. If you want to mention that, you have K-State Extension staff here today. Someone has to come up here in just a little bit and talk again about some of our efforts for long-term conservation. So we were blessed with rain. I'll talk about that here in just a moment. Unexpected significant amount of rains, especially in June, that has brought Cheney level back up. Probably the last time I was here talking to the council formally, we were probably still over seven feet below the normal. As we stand here today, we're about a half a foot below what's considered normal conservation pool, which is put this is about 97% in real time of the being full. We are still in stage two of our drought restrictions for our drought response plan as triggered by, just a reminder, the 12-month running average. Not surprisingly, it's going to take some time for that 12-month running average to come back to a point that we would feel comfortable lifting the stage two drought restrictions. We're currently 63%. Our projections, if Cheney stays relatively full where it's at now, it's probably sometime next spring to get to the point of being able to lift or come out of stage two drought restrictions based on that 12-month average. We've had a lot of questions asked about going back into stage one. We entered into stage one of the drought restrictions, which is when we're between 70 and 89% in January of 2023. Stage one triggered voluntary conservation, a lot of things we did on our end for internal conservation, which I'll talk about more in just a moment. So one of the challenges, I've had this question asked a lot when I've been out making public presentations, is now that we are heading back in the right direction, why don't we go into stage one when we get to 70%? You can see this stage two is 50 to 69%. Question's been asked, what happened? Why don't we wait and see when we get 70% and go back to stage one? The challenge with that is we literally jump back and forth between stage one and stage two in a matter of days. I'm going to show you some data in just a moment that has a huge impact on the reservoir level with the temperatures that are predicted that are coming. If anybody's had a chance to look at the weather, we have some ridiculously hot temperatures coming in the next 10 days. It will have a significant impact on evaporation. We're not careful, and we try to look at that 70% threshold going between stage two and stage one. We'll just hop back and forth between the two. Doesn't make sense. It's not practical. We still want to hang on to that 90% trigger of coming out of stage two restriction. That's where I'm wrapped for now. I do have a possible consideration I want to talk to you about later in this presentation, maybe an alternative to that. Just as a quick reminder, those mandatory water conservation within stage twos are taking out our water usage to one day per week. All watering is prohibited outdoor between 10 a.m. and 8 p.m. That's where we're at. That's where we're staying, of course. I want to talk about the impact to Cheney Reservoir. And I'll show some rain data here in just a minute on the next slide of really what got us to this point. I will say our drought response plan worked. It's done a great job. It did what it was supposed to. It was put in place coming off the heels of the last major drought in 2013. And it's meant to extend our public water supply. We recognize limiting irrigation to one day a week is painful in a lot of ways, but it's worked, and it's done a good job. I might mention, we were eyeballing stage three. I want to mention that before I forget about this. I spoke to a group, the Wichita Builders Association, yesterday, and I'll talk about that again. Stage three was looming. We were getting very close to considering entering into stage three because of where Cheney was heading. Quick reminder, stage three would have eliminated all outdoor watering. That became our target, our goal, to stay away from that. It's something I want to keep fresh in everybody's mind of what can happen in the future and why we need to be very diligent and cautious in what we do now. Reservoir is in a lot better shape. We just need to be really judicious in how we go forward, and that's what I want to talk to you about today. So I mentioned this already. I'll mention it again. Typically, during each of the summer months, we can lose 10 to 12 inches of water just to evaporation only, which is compounded when we have no inflow. We still have a regular use that we're drawing out of the reservoir for providing water to the region. Combination of those things, you can start to see the level going back down. Got some rain last night, brought it back up just a little bit. Prior to that, if you happen to watch the level for the last four or five days, you can see it start dropping again. Lots to do with the heat, lots to do with the evaporation. So dry condition stayed back from 2021. Considerably less rainfall than normal each year since that time. We did have three fairly wet months after four years of drought. In November, I think we had, was may have been a record November, that provided some gain that pushed off stage three. That was the best thing that that did in November because we were really getting close probably by this spring. In May and June, as you were aware, I think June, this June was the third worst June in history, probably. Significant flooding events, especially around June 3rd and June 6th rains that we had. Very fortunate what that did. It rained in the right areas for once. Had a big impact on the Cheney water level that we see today. So again, we need to remain cautious in our approach for a variety of reasons and really focus on the stability of Cheney Reservoir because while this is great rain that we got, it doesn't create stable condition because we can just start heading back in the same direction just as quick. So talking about storm precipitation patterns, the reason why I wanted to talk about this is I've heard a lot from acute community engagement. I've had a lot of questions. I've had a lot of comments. There's concerns that there's been overdevelopment of the reason, that there's too many people drawing water, that we need another water supply. We're going to talk about that and what the future looks like. But when Cheney Reservoir is in good shape, and I might mention real quick to our secondary water supply being equated. You've heard me talk before about our efforts, especially through our aquifer storage and recovery projects and recharging the aquifer. The aquifer is still in good shape. We're very fortunate for that, considering the drought we've been in. But if you look at the impacts to our surface water supply, they are absolutely a result of what has happened with precipitation and what hasn't happened. So the question again has been asked about, are we letting too many homes being built? Should you be providing water to wholesale customers? We have long-term projections based on data that goes back to before the Dust Bowl. And based on those projections, if Cheney's in good shape, we can provide water for generations to come, including projected growth. The problem is that we can't control the weather. So that's what we're dealing with. We have to keep that to the front of our minds going forward. Find a way to combat that. I think we've done a great job, and we're going to continue to do some things based on what I want to talk to you about today. So just real quickly, five years since 2020, we're 16 to 20 inches below normal precipitation. That includes the large rain events we had in June, which is really telling. 60 days since between May and July, just of this year, 68 inches above normal. Thank goodness for that. Point being, this is not stability. This is not a good model for the future. This is not the time to say, let's lift watering restrictions because everything's good because we can head right back in the same direction. I'll show you why. So this is a little bit hard to make out, but just as Cheney service level since 2009. You can see, as you start from the left, that very low point is the last drought that we dealt with in 2013. We did not have a drought response plan in place at that time. We were fortunate to get some massive rain events, took us out of that drought. Some reasonable stability. 2019 was one of our worst years on record. You see the highest peak there. As we got to 2020 and started moving towards now, you can see that steady decline. Each one of those arrows points to summer and fall. If you can't make it out, 2021 through 2024, significant declines each summer. As much as two to three feet of lost elevation during those periods of time. In November of 2024, Cheney was at an all-time low since it's been built and first filled up. That's all the way back to the early 1960s. So we were at a record low then. Thank goodness for the November rains again, or we likely would have gone into stage three this spring. We're now back to a good place, but again, you can see what's happening here. We can start heading back down quickly, depending on what the weather does. So moving on from that, I want to talk about what we have done to this point for our water conservation efforts. All of these things will continue moving forward. They're not changing where we've been and where we're going, especially with the organizational efforts for conservation. Let's get on these real quick, things we've talked about, and I'll cover a few of these more specifically in the upcoming slides. Uh, we've reduced water usage on city-owned grass-covered lands. This is a park golf course. This park department has been a wonderful partner with us with their landscape experts on changing our habits for grass types, for irrigation. Uh, we kept the fountains up. As you know, we've done a lot with the, uh, Aquatics Master Plan to create a situation where we save water with all of our splash pads and pools. Striker soccer complex is a great example of changing out grasses to turf and eliminating most of the watering. Uh, all of our new facilities going forward, police station, fire station, everything that we do will have drought tolerant grasses. It used to be not long ago that all of those facilities would likely have been best-ski grass irrigated. We won't go back to doing that. We're utilizing recycled water from Herman Hill Park Water Center, uh, for watering trees and for some of our utility operations or cleaning pipe. We also have contractors now utilizing that. I'll talk about more in just a moment. We've gone to the conservation line, the landscaping guidelines, upgraded irrigation technology, where irrigation is still used on a limited basis at our facilities. We've reduced water usage at parking rack facilities, public works and utilities operations, which is considerable. Vehicle cleaning, uh, I'll talk about fire trucks, golf course, golf cars, fire training. Uh, park department is reusing water from swimming pools after summer for irrigation. That's something that we've done for some time. It's a very good water-saving measure. Uh, and then we have an internal conservation team represented as a beach department. We've had several council members that have had the opportunity to sit in on that. Uh, we will continue going forward to talk about our ability to save water in the future, what we can do internally. So everybody knows, large operation, large organization, we can do a lot to lead the way. We can save water going forward. We can provide an example for the community. So it's really good stuff happening there and we will continue those things on change. Talk about a couple of specific things that we have done along the way or continuing to do. Currently with, uh, this was a really exciting and innovative initiative, uh, that we were able to develop with the test water from the new water treatment plant, which I'll come back to specifically in just a moment. But one part of that right now, we have resumed what we call competence testing at the water treatment plant. That water is being discharged through the pipeline that will eventually go to Hespa Station. Most of that's being discharged to the river, which provides some benefit to the river flow. But we're close here with Botanica, uh, staff was able to make some, uh, changes, uh, to what happens with the pipeline. When it gets close to Botanica, they're going to be able to capture almost three million gallons of water over the course of the summer. They're doing it right now. Uh, if you were to go over by our water treatment plants, you kind of see the setup there. They're taking water to what these temporary tanks are. Forty thousand gallons a day that they're utilizing to be able to offset their water usage through the summer. Really a great story. Uh, Botanica really dug into this, helped make this happen. Our staff did a wonderful job. Our operations guys did. Building the necessary improvements, saving costs for that. So, uh, they're going to continue using that through the summer. So while I'm on that topic, as far as test water from the new treatment plant, I mentioned that we are moving forward. Uh, the requirements for clarifiers have been completed. We are now into what we consider confidence testing to make sure everything's working the way it needs to. We will be continuing that for, for some period of time here before we get back to performance and acceptance testing. Uh, at whatever point in time the city takes over the facility, we're still going to need to, uh, run some test water through the plant as I discussed in the past, as we take over operations and understand fully how the plant works. So what I can do is to share, uh, something we've been working on. We had a desire to do this from the very start and there were some real technical challenges. There were some regulatory components that were hard to overcome. But starting as early as next week, we will be taking test water to our current water treatment plant, running it through the plant, effectively using that as much of our water, daily water sources we can. Um, I, I want to give real credit to Logan Walker, who's in the audience here with us. Logan is our interim, uh, division manager for water production and pumping. Uh, he and Don Henry and some others does some pretty amazing things over the last few months to make this work. It's been a real concerted effort with multiple consultants onboard, highly technical stuff, a lot of things that I don't understand. Uh, but they've been able to make this work. We've got PDAG approval and so we've done some testing of that and we expect to move forward. I don't know that we can capture every single bit of test water every single day to take it back through the plant, but we're going to get there. There's currently some limitations. Um, I think this is going to work really well. Uh, because of the challenges we originally faced, we'll see how this goes long-term, but this could be a really big deal for us as we still trying to get to the point where we're going to plan online and operational by the end of the year. But that necessarily, uh, creates the need for more test water, taking that through the plant. It's a great deal. It's going to take, uh, away from our need to pull from our water resources more so than we already would. So I wanted to mention that while I was on this slide, really good things happening there. We've talked about purple pipelines.
Can I interrupt you?
Yes, go ahead.
Just so that we have a recap, um, the clarifiers are now repaired.
Yes.
We're currently in confidence testing of the water, correct?
Correct.
And then the next phase will be performance and acceptance testing.
Correct.
About how long will that take, um, in terms of months or weeks?
Um, the best thing I can tell you right now is I think we're on target for this plant to be fully operational by the end of the year. Uh, the, the additional testing, assuming everything keeps moving forward as it is right now, things are going pretty well. Uh, confidence testing and performance testing, all of it's probably four months-ish. Don't hold me to that. That's our hope. That's our goal right now. Uh, we're still shooting for the end of the year for the city to take over the plant and to start making it operational. One of the real values to our ability to take water through our current water treatment plant and not dispose of it as we have been doing, uh, is it adds a level of security for us, uh, maybe security is not the right word. Uh, it gives us, uh, it gives us the, the ability to know that if we have any challenges with operations in the new plant, we can, we can correct that by sending the water through the current plant, if that makes sense. I don't think we're going to need to do that for, for a long time, but we have that opportunity so we can lower some of the risks that we might have of bringing a new plant on the line. So this is really, really a good deal. It's going to help us moving forward in a lot of ways. Decided to make, to get this going and hopefully we can make it happen. Um, what we're doing for recycling of treated wastewater, if you will, uh, in several areas. I've talked about this before. I'll hit it on it real quick. I mentioned earlier about, uh, what's happening at our water center. That's treating the contaminated groundwater from the core of our city, Gilbert and Mosey, North and Cut, North industrial corridor areas we talked about in the past. We have a million gallons a day of treated groundwater going to the river. Uh, we've now created the ability to capture that water. Uh, I mentioned that, uh, we have multiple departments that are now using that recycled water. We've opened this up for contractors at no cost. Probably haven't seen as much use of that as we had hoped. I mentioned this to the group lobby yesterday. They're going to continue to spread the word. We think so far we've saved several hundred thousand gallons and we'll continue to do that, especially with our operations throughout the year. Uh, we've talked about spirit in the past. Uh, we provide almost a million gallons a day. Uh, recycled, uh, treated wastewater from our main wastewater treatment plant, plant two, to spirits, uh, for their cooling processes, for their, what they do with production. That offsets almost three hundred eighty-five million gallons of potable use, uh, each year for them. We will continue that effort. I'm going to talk about more around our reuse effort here soon. And that's going to be a big part of what that will do going forward.
Uh, two questions real quick. One, what is the rate? Is it like thirty percent? They, they pay thirty percent of what they normally would for the recycled water and purple pipes?
Spirit?
Yeah.
Um, it's less than that. Uh, it is something that we are going to, uh, discuss at some point in time when that contract comes up for renewal. But I don't know how the term was set, but it's less than that. It's probably about ten percent of what they would normally pay. So they, they pay, just to be clear, they paid for all of the infrastructure costs, uh, which is critical for making that happen. The, the cost that we charge them for a thousand gallons, and I apologize if I have that number with me, is meant to recover our operations costs, and I think it's doing that. That, that's where we targeted that number to be.
Okay, I appreciate that. Uh, second question is, has any other company or group, I mean, you mentioned a couple of the areas of town, uh, maybe like the West Street Industrial Corridor as well. Has anybody else reached out or shown interest in, um, expanding on this project as well?
They have, uh, in one of our main, uh, one, one of our, uh, efforts with our development of our water use master plan, which I'll talk about more in a moment, is to target more industry. Uh, we are going to be conducting specific outreach and evaluation of other industry that could utilize the same approach, uh, for reuse. So the, there'll be more to come on that soon because I do think there are other opportunities. Uh, having discussions with, uh, people like Troy Anderson, we've got a partnership soon, uh, to look at potential new industry, what that might look like, but also focusing on existing businesses that could utilize this. Cause, uh, this is really a good place to go, I think, for long-term conservation and being able to offset potable reuse by doing exactly what we're doing in spirit. So there'll be more to come on that.
Awesome, thank you.
Gary, uh, you mentioned that, uh, the adoption rate from authorized contractors has been low. Uh, who is eligible and how do people learn that they could utilize this reused water?
Uh, any contractor is eligible, uh, so, and we've tried to keep this flexible. So there's some challenges with, uh, being able to get the water out of this fire hydrant. So it generally takes contractors knowledgeable with that in an absence of us having to have staff there. Uh, so landscape contractors, uh, we've had a few of our contractors that do some of our street work. Uh, they utilize water for dust control, so I shouldn't want to get so hot and dry. So, uh, we're trying to be flexible. As part of our K D A T reporting requirements, we need it to be a licensed contractor because they need to, uh, res- they need to respond to and provide data on the amount of water that they've used. So we've got this out on our website too. Uh, like I said, I mentioned, we met with, which our builders association developers group yesterday. They continue to promote issues. Anytime we get out in public, I like to talk about it too and let folks know that that water's available. Okay, so moving forward, we've talked in the past about what do we do in perpetuity? What does the new normal look like? Because there should be a new normal. It should not be where we were. Again, keeping to the front of all of our minds where we've been, uh, I've talked a lot about going back to twenty thirteen. I can remember that period of time because we had some major projects going on, especially along the river that were in it being impacted by the deluge we had that took us out of that drought. Uh, but I would bet and guess back in twenty thirteen, several weeks after those rain events, most people forgot that we were even in a drought. We need to be very careful that we don't do that again. I think that what we just went through was, went for a lot longer period of time than anybody would have projected. I can remember last fall, as we were contemplating going into stage two restrictions, I heard from numerous people who said, don't do it. It's going to rain. We all know it's going to rain. This makes no sense and it didn't. I mean, we got rain now, but again, we were very close to going into stage three. That's how significant it was. Keeping all of that in mind, uh, I, we don't believe that we should go back to where we were allowing seven days a week watering and, and no restrictions at all. So we have a proposal that I've mentioned to you before. Uh, I talked about the fact that Oklahoma City's done this for some period of time, which I'll show you some information for them in just a moment. In twenty thirteen, Oklahoma City coming off of the drought, probably the same other effect that us and some water system issues, they went to alternate day watering, which has provided long-term conservation. We would like to look at a variation of that. This is something that I'm going to bring to city, a plan that you bring to the city council on August nineteenth for a formal recommendation, but I want to talk through you what we think this looks like. So this would be again, long-term conservation. This becomes our new norm. Uh, this does not replace our drought response plan. Our drought response plan will remain in place even when we come out of stage two restrictions for the future, our drought response plan and the stages that are triggered by the level of genie would still stay in place in spite of what this recommendation is. So Oklahoma City is alternate day watering. That is an option. What we would like to do, uh, is to look at wa- allowing watering three days a week, taking off Sundays as an additional conservation measure. This applies to lawn watering sprinkler devices, so spray irrigation. So you've got an in-ground irrigation system where you've got a sprinkler on the end of a hose. This is what it applies to. Uh, twenty percent of our watering annually, uh, is generally outdoor irrigation. That's why our drought response plan triggers, uh, restrictions on outdoor irrigation, long-term conservation. We could still focus on outdoor irrigation. It's discretionary water use. It's where we can make the biggest difference. And, um, it is, we believe, a- and again, I've got the experts here, we're going to talk about it. We've been through all this time. We've talked about this. Watering your yard three days a week is all that it is. Uh, to, to flourish, to be strong, uh, to be green, to keep, uh, landscaping alive. It can still be done with watering three days a week. So our proposal would be if your address isn't an even number, you water on Monday, Wednesday, Friday. Odd numbers are Tuesday, Thursday and Saturday. No watering on Sundays. There will be time restrictions still in place. We've changed that from ten AM to eight PM to ten AM to six PM every single day. That's no watering of any kind. Trying to make this as simple as we can for people to understand. And again, we'll come back to this in August with the details. Not even hand watering during the day. These restrictions would apply to, uh, again, irrigation use only. There are some other restrictions in place. I'll talk about in just a moment. Uh, but overall, we're focused on outdoor irrigation. You'd be able to water three days a week. Our estimate, our estimated conservation is ten to fifteen, ten to fifteen, ten to fifteen. Could amount to as much as a billion gallons a year. That's a real number and that's a big deal going forward for long-term conservation. I just want to mention again, this does not take place over the launch plan stages. Um, I think that's what I wanted to cover on that slide. I'm happy to come back to it, but there's some additional parts of this I want to talk about.
We'll go back to that slide really quick.
Yes.
How is, uh, Oklahoma City's alternate day watering? Is it also even odd number, uh?
Yeah, so what they do is, uh, same thing. It, but if you're on, uh, if you're on even side of the street, you water on the even days. If you're on the odd side of the street, water on the odd days. Um, and, and I, I think that's worked for them, but that's, that's seven days a week. Uh, we kind of like the idea of taking Monday off as an additional conservation effort. This is not part of the reason why, but I'll, I'll tell you something else to be talked about real quick. For those who have a controller for the irrigation system, if you do seven days a week, uh, when you go between months, you have to reprogram your controller every single month. This simplifies some of that too. And I think overall, if you look at the side of that, makes it simpler to understand. Uh, but we can talk about this going forward. This is our thought. We think this makes for a more simple approach. We want to do what we can to make sure everybody understands what this looks like, uh, and not have this be overly burdensome or difficult to understand. So there's some other parts of this and I'm happy to come back to that, but there's some other parts of this I want to talk about.
Another thing real quick.
Yeah.
What's Oklahoma City's enforcement policy? How do they enforce these, um, every other day watering policies?
I don't know that I have the details on that. I did have staff reach out and talk to Oklahoma City, uh, and I can get back to you on that. I, I want to, I'll talk a little bit about what our plan is. Uh, but they said that they feel like, and of course it's been in place for twelve years, that the community really came on board and that enforcement really isn't that much of a challenge for them anymore. Uh, that is still our goal, to make this about education and collaboration. Uh, I'll mention real quick, you know, our, our goal is still to enforce this. I've had discussions when I've been out in the public and some concerns from folks that said they thought we wanted to stay in drought restrictions now because we were making a bunch of money off the enforcement. I'll just tell you everyone, it's worth it. Since last August, uh, the penalties that we have levied are eleven hundred bucks total. Uh, we're not, that's not our goal. We're trying to let people know what this is about, trying to educate them. We're still going to be challenged with enforcement, but that will still be in place. I'll start with Charlie on the right real quick.
All right, Gary, can you go back to that, uh, the previous slide one more time? I'm looking at the Oklahoma City, um, watering restrictions. Any change? This is a very minor thing, but I think details matter. So if your address is an even number, oftentimes we think of Monday as one, Wednesday is three, Friday is five. Could we switch it so that odd numbers, if this goes through, I'm just asking for? I'm just asking for logic. Odd numbers could water on Monday, Wednesday, Friday. Even numbers would water on Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday. Just logic.
Sure, we certainly could do that. That's, that I, this was a place to start. I think that's a reasonable thought. Anything that we can do, I think, that, that helps this make sense, that I like that. And we've got time to work on this between now and, we'd like to get this going in the middle of August. Real quick on the chart on the right before I talk about some additional parts of this proposal for alternate day watering, three days a week watering. Just real quick, if you look at the black lines, or if you look at the blue real quick, that's kind of in the background, that basic color. It shows what they, what they've got their precipitation data, just like I showed now. So you can see that's up and down across the board, just like we've seen, right? Same climate, same region. The black, if you look prior to 2013, that box is at, you can see there was considerably more usage. The black is the water usage compared to the right side of that line of 2013. So it's made a difference. It is helping conservation considerably in Oklahoma City. It's lower than water usage going to alternate day watering. I just wanted to show that as a quick graphical representation. Going back to what our proposal would be for the future, beyond when we lift drought restrictions, if that's how we want to time this, for the future, our new norm, this would be a change to the ordinance, we would allow some variances to this watering three days a week, including establishing yards. This would be by a formal request. Oklahoma City's done this, they found that it worked pretty well. It's really hasn't been that many requests each year, so it wasn't something they couldn't follow. If you're going to reseed your yard, we could consider allowing up to 30 days of watering to be able to establish that and then go back to the three days a week. Sodding, we will allow 21 days of daily watering, go back to the three days. Special circumstances, there's a variety of things Oklahoma City's done. We just want to leave it open to requests that we can consider as they come up. Not trying to be really burdensome with this. We want to cut back on irrigation for lawns. That's the main thing we want to do. We can make a big difference in the future without being burdensome with this and really digging into too many details. There are exceptions that would not require variance. And again, as we go forward, we want to do all we could to make this very clear to the public. Hand watering could be done at any time, except for 10 to 6, just to be very clear. 10:00 AM, 6:00 PM, absolutely no watering of any kind in perpetuity. It makes no sense. The worst thing that could possibly happen, even if you're on a well, was to talk about in a moment. This would be watering at 1:00 in the afternoon when it's 100 degrees outside because the water can be absolutely nothing, is the biggest waste of water possible. So hand watering is still good. As we go, if we look at this going forward, hand watering, can hand water all you want. Somebody standing out in their yard, watering by hand, they're not going to spend the time that they would if their irrigation system's on. It's not going to use the amount of water. We think that's okay. Irrigation using non-potable water sources, which your water wells are re-cleaning water, would be exceptions. We talked a little bit about enforcement. Penalty schedule will be the same as what's in place for a drought response plan. The initial is a warning. After that, it's $50. Each subsequent is $100. So our goal is to be punitive. We're not making money off of this deal by any means. It's to create education and so that people understand what's happening going forward. So the educational focus being front and center. Still have in place that the public have reported drought violations. Our goal is really to get folks on board, to continue talking about where we've been, the, the challenges of going back there, and the true value of what this could do for us long-term, of being able to push even stage two restrictions off in the future. Couple of quick things. We've kind of talked about FAQs, which we would do going forward, but a couple of things I wanted to hit on. That's the last part of this. So question gets asked a lot, and this applies to my flower trees and shrubs. These restrictions, long-term restrictions, I won't call them restrictions, but what we would do going forward for what's allowed for watering is to limit wasted water and discourage excessive sprinkler irrigation. Flower trees and shrubs can be watered by hand on any day outside of that time restriction. But we recommend following a watering schedule consistent with best practices from K-State Extension Office, which I'm going to have to come up here in just a moment, to, to, it provides some additional insight on that. Big question is, does this apply to businesses? As you know, our drought response plan, especially as we got into stage two, looking at stage three, when that drought response plan was developed originally, our goal was to minimize impacted businesses. Those businesses whose core economic activity centers around the use of water. And so there are were exemptions with the drought response plan, they're still in place. Those same exemptions would be in place here, but this applies otherwise. So gas stations, banks, commercial businesses, shopping centers, retail, whatever it might be, they're going to be watering the grass out front. This three days a week watering would apply to them. They are not exempt. Car washes, again, would be exempt. Golf courses would be exempt. Businesses that utilize water would be exempt. Those same rules would apply. We would make that very clear. Otherwise, this is in effect for everybody. It becomes our new norm. We've had discussion about well users. This is in place now, and this will stay in place in the future regardless of what we do. There are no restrictions on well users, and that would continue for a variety of reasons. So our current stage two watering restrictions do not apply to well users. We continue to encourage everyone who has a well to do the same thing, save water that we can. There's a couple of reasons why. So in the state of Kansas, each property owner has the rights to the water under their property up to two acres. That's a part of the permitting process. Since 2022, over 2,000 domestic wells have been permitted in Wichita alone, nearly all for irrigation. So we want to be able to protect those rights. Here's the biggest reason. We, we can look at and we can model this and we can show. So the local aquifer, if we talk about the local aquifer, the water that's below our city in general, it naturally recharges with flow from the big Arkansas River. It can be impacted by drought, but we know that the use of domestic wells and the local aquifer does not impact the water level in the atmosphere. We know that. We've seen that historically, it does not impact our groundwater supply. That's the primary reason why we've not put restrictions on well, domestic well use. And in fact, during good times, when genie reservoir is up, we were better off with more domestic wells because we take the stress off of that service water supply genie reservoir. So still not applying restrictions to wells. We don't plan to do that in the future. I'll tell you real quick, cities of Hayes and Salida, they do put restrictions, have put restrictions on well users because they were able to show that they did impact their public water supply and groundwater supply. So there's a difference. It makes sense. We can show here that it doesn't. All right, moving on. Sorry, I forgot a little bit more if you bear with me. Thank you for, for listening to this point. I want to talk about our water conservation rebate program going forward. We're going to do provisions. And then I have you, K-State, you have been talking for just a bit, so that I can start to wind this down. Our current rebate program includes rebates for rain barrels, rain sensor shutoffs, things that are used for outdoor watering, hose deposits, smaller irrigation controllers, also indoor toilet repair kits. You've heard me talk before about one of the biggest wastes of water is leaking toilets, dual flush converter kits, actual toilets themselves, water-efficient clothes washers and dishwashers. We're still seeing a lot of requests for rebates, which is good. We'd like to expand the rebate program to include drought tolerant seeds and potentially landscaping for converting lawns. We've had this question asked a lot. In fact, the question has been asked, what about converting an entire yard? It's not cost-effective. I don't think we can ever get to that point. We evaluated a program from Utah where they did that. Apparently, this community has a lot of disposable income because they were providing thousands of dollars in rebates for people to convert their yard. I don't see us ever getting to that point. However, Councilor Johnson had a good suggestion that we evaluated the similar communities that have done this, Hayes and one in Nebraska, that provides a rebate for seed. Get a bag of grass seed, generally probably for 50 bucks, right? And start making the change of converting your yard. We would even allow in the future an exemption to water that grass seed in. So expanding that rebate program would include providing resources on how to convert, how to make that conversion happen to more native and drought-resistant plants and less water-intensive options. Also provide educational resources on lawn care maintenance to reduce overwatering and over-fertilizing habits. Education, I can't say that enough, it's such a major component of what we need to do going forward. We've got to keep this out there. I know people, there's a lot of folks that have told me that they're tired of hearing me talk about it. I don't blame them. I've been out and made this presentation so many times now, I'm tired of hearing it myself. We've got to keep it out there. We cannot back off at this point, and that's exactly what we'll do. So at this point, I'm going to ask Matthew McKernan from K-State Extension Office to come up and share some addition, and submit information with you. He's already over talking about going forward. Once he gets done, I've got a couple more slides, and I promise I'm going to get to the end of this. And Abby, throughout this with him also.
Thank you, Gary. I'm going to thank you for the counsel's morning for the time. Over the past year and a half, we've appreciated the opportunity to work with the city of Wichita as a partner in drought education and to encourage the community to implement best watering practices. Today, we're here to help continue that education and provide you with some information as we look to encourage water conservation across the city. Our intent today, as we speak, is not to necessarily speak for or against any of the proposed ordinances here, but instead try to provide you some information and research-based recommendations for best practices of plant care in our area. Watering can often be a complicated task, depending on trying to find and balance the different water needs of different plants in the landscape. And so we're here today to help ensure that our future has a more beautiful city of Wichita with landscapes full of trees, flowers, fruit, vegetables, and lawns. We're here really today to encourage the community to water in the right way. The best watering practices, like I said, can be difficult to sometimes implement based on the different water needs of different plants. Water needs in landscape can vary not only on the type of plant, but also on the type of soil that you have, whether it's a heavy clay or sandy soil, which is going to vary across the Sedgwick County community. It also is going to make a difference on how well-established that plant is in the landscape and what kind of root system that plant has to be able to take advantage of water at different depths in the soil. In general, our watering recommendations are going to be for all plants to be watered deeply, slowly, and infrequently. In general, that means not watering every day. However, there are some exceptions to that rule, like any good rule, and Abby will cover some of those today for you to take into consideration should you look at this ordinance. Ideally, we want to train our plants to go through periods of infrequent watering, or what we like call mini droughts. Those periods of drying in between watering are really there to help encourage a deep root system in our plants so that our plants are able to handle longer periods of dry conditions better without the need of frequent watering. As we water, the idea of watering is really to provide water to the root system of our plants. Each plant is going to have a different depth of the root system, and we really want to make sure that we water that critical zone for our plant when we try to water. For our turf grass, ideally, when we water, that wants to be about six to eight inches deep in the soil profile. When we water our trees and shrubs in the community, ideally, we want to soak the soil much deeper, anywhere from eight to 24 inches deep, to really provide water for those types of plants. Ideally, we target that 12 to 18 inches because that's a little bit easier to accomplish than maybe 24. But the 18 to 24 inches is really where the majority of the root system of our trees will be located.
In regard to watering trees, is hand watering enough for that? Or with like a soaker hose or something under wood chips, would that work a little better? Should that be considered for extensions as well?
Yeah, that's a great question. That'll be something Abby speaks to a little bit more here today. It's really going to depend on maturity of the tree, how long that tree's been in the landscape, and its ability to have established a system and flow of water. So hand watering on a newly planted tree, anything that's been in the landscape five years or less, typically is adequate to provide moisture for that tree. However, for larger trees, which are really trying to accomplish is watering from the trunk, out to the ends of the branches, and even a little bit beyond, because the root system of our trees is really two to three times the diameter of the canopy or the branches of the tree. So in those types of situations, hand watering becomes sometimes less practical when you have a tree that reaches 20 to 40 feet. So you can water it by hose-end watering, but again, just to get 12 to 18 inches over that big of an area, sometimes irrigation system seems to be beneficial. And under most of our vegetables and flowers in the landscape, ideally, when we water, we're trying to give them about six to 12 inches of water deeply. Much of the discussion when we talk about water conservation, landscape focuses on lawns. And I think lawns often have received a little bit too much criticism for their value when it comes to their purpose in our urban ecosystems. They have numerous benefits to our environment, our human health, and quality of life. And I'd just like to highlight a few of those today as we consider all of this. One of the big proponents of lawns, they reduce noise. As compared to some of our paved surfaces, especially along roadsides, a lawn area is going to reduce noise by 40% compared to those hard surfaces. Lawns, much like trees, are also going to be an important source of natural air conditioning. Lawns are typically going to be 30% cooler than our paved surfaces. They'll also be 14% cooler than just bare ground or dirt. Lawns are also an important way for us to improve the quality of our water in this area as they reduce a lot of pollution. Grasses are a great filter for oil, grease, pesticides, household waste, or other chemicals, and they prevent them from reaching our water supply. A lot of these pollutants bind tightly to the batch layers that lawns build, as well as to the soil roots, where microbes can attack those products and break them down so that they don't reach our water supplies. Turf grass is also a great source of oxygen for our community. 2,500 square foot section of lawn, about a 50 foot by 50 foot section of lawn, is going to absorb enough carbon dioxide and produce enough oxygen for a family of four every single year. So if we take the average lawn size in our community, about a quarter acre of lawn, that's going to be able to produce enough oxygen for 17 people each year. Another value of lawns is their aesthetic value. Oftentimes, we find healthy lawn increases lawn values by as much as 15%. For these and many other reasons, we really want to focus on having healthy lawns as an important part of our community. When we talk about their importance in the urban ecosystem, it's important to reflect really on the types of turf grass that grow best for our area. As K-State Extension, we have four recommendations for the type of turf grass that would be grown in our area. The first is tall fescue. That is a cool season grass, as most of us know, which means that it grows best in the spring and the fall when temperatures are cooler and typically rainfall is more naturally abundant. Tall fescue does have the natural tendency to go dormant during the heat of the summer, and oftentimes, that's why it's watered during the summer months to prevent those grasses from going dormant, supplement irrigation, and kind of avoiding that vulnerability of green. It's one of our most common turf grasses in this area, and that often has to do with the ability to easily plant it. Tall fescue is typically planted by grass seed rather than sod, although it can be purchased as sod as well. Our next three turf grass recommendations are Bermuda grass, soya grass, and buffalo grass. Those three are all going to be the opposite end of the spectrum in what we call warm-season grasses. Those grasses naturally thrive in the heat and drier conditions of our environment when summer temperatures are warmer. On the opposite end of the spectrum, our warm-season grasses typically go dormant in the winter months when temperatures are cooler. Warm-season grasses, Bermuda, soya, and buffalo are all considered generally more drought tolerant and use less water as a result. One of the challenges that we experience with the warm-season grasses here in Wichita community is often their cold hardiness or their ability to withstand the harsh winter temperatures in their seed. We are part of what's considered the transition zone, meaning that we experience all of the heat and the droughts and the intensity of the Southern United States during the summer months, but we also experience all of the harshest cold and winter conditions of the Northern United States. And so picking the right turf grass and the right plant to be able to handle both ends of that extreme incentive. One of the challenges also with warm-season grasses is mostly it is not planted by seed. Most of our warm-season grasses are planted either in the form of sod, plugs, which is smaller pieces of sod, or sprigs, essentially a collection of stems that you would put in the soil. These are basically all vegetatively propagated or planted from other pieces of a turf grass plant, although there are a few seed varieties for each, available for each of these types of turf grass. It's important, like I said, for these warm-season grasses that we plant ones that are well adapted to our area so that they can handle the cold and don't die out over the winter months. It's also important that we note for the warm-season turf grass seeds, oftentimes they're a little bit more difficult to find or a little bit harder to establish than maybe some of our cool-season turf grasses like tall fescue. One other thing on the, on the note of the types of grasses, often you'll see, especially in our big box stores, other types of grass available for purchase, including annual ryegrass, breeding ryegrass, Kentucky bluegrass, or fine fescues. Typically, these are Typically, these are found in seed mix, and generally, these are all cool season turf grasses that are not ones that we recommend for our area. Uh, they establish relatively quickly, so they're often used for erosion conservation purposes. Uh, but they generally don't have the ability to withstand the heats and the droughts of our summer months, and so they often naturally die out during that period. And even with subsequent irrigation, are not able to, to continue to thrive, uh, like the other grasses that we talked about today. Would like to say just one other thing on the need for tall fescue in our community. Although tall fescue is a cool season turf grass and does use more water than our warm season grasses, and our estimation is still a critical part of our lawn program here in the area. The main purpose of this being that tall fescue is our most shade tolerant grass. And so for any community who, resident who has large trees or their homes or other structures shave our large portions of their property, most of the warm season grasses will not grow in those dense shaded areas, uh, hence the need for tall fescue. Of all the warm season grasses, soya grass is going to be our most, uh, shade tolerant of the turf grasses. However, it will still struggle and oftentimes not grow under the intense dense shade of some of our large canopy trees here in the Wichita community. With that, I will happily turn it over to Abby to speak a little bit more about some of the watering needs and some of the exemptions that might need to be considered ahead of you moving forward with this proposal.
Thank you, Matthew, and thank you, council, for having us today. Um, so I'm going to talk a little more about watering needs in landscape plants and how they're going to vary by type of plant. Such as tall fescue is only going to require one inch to one and a half inch of water per week in the summer, less in the spring and the fall when the temperatures are cooler and, uh, rainfall is more consistent. Bermuda and soya is going to need, um, six to eight inches of a deep soak every week or every other week. Buffalo will need, um, six to eight inches of a deep soak once every two weeks. Mature trees and shrubs need 12, a 12 inch deep soak every three to four weeks. And that will be, like Matthew said, you're going to water out and beyond the drip line there for those. Um, and the newly planted trees, less than five years old and shrubs, need about 10 gallons of water applied every week. Daily watering needs, um, may vary. Every plant will vary on its watering needs based on many factors, including the type of plant, the soil, uh, is planted in, whether the plant is newly planted or well established, the life cycle stage of the plant, and more. As a result, there are many times where an exemption from the proposed plan may be needed. Most often, a variance from this plan is going to be needed when establishing new plant materials. The following scenarios are areas we suggest, we would suggest having a variance plan in effect and further consideration for implications of, for the, of future ordinances. Our first suggestion is turf grass seed. For grass to be established by seed, it requires a seed coat to absorb and retain moisture in order to break the seed's dormancy and start to grow. After the seed germinates and starts to grow, the soil surface moisture, uh, surface soil, surface must retain moisture at least for one to two weeks in order for the root system of the seed to establish. This requires watering as much as one to three times per day for short durations in order to keep the seed and soil surface wet, depending on the temperature and the time of year, of course. Cool season grass seed is ideally planted in August to October, or in the late winter or early spring months. Warm season grass is ideally planted between May through July. Variances to the proposed ordinances would need to be made available during those times. Our second suggestion is turf grass sod. Sod is the most commonly planted form of warm, warm season turf grass with the lawn needing to be planted from existing grass samples rather than seeds so that the desirable characteristics of that variety, such as cold tolerance, disease tolerance, vigor, color, or other growing characteristics remain true to type and genetically identical. Sod is also used to cool season turf, such as tall fescue. Often when planting grass from seed would take too long for establishment, possibly in the late fall before winter, or at least spring before the summer heat. When sod is cut, a portion of the root system is transported with the sod. However, the majority of the sod is leaf and stem materials, which can pre, which can produce roots when, um, planted and watered in. After sod is planted in a new location, it needs to be frequently watered in order to provide water to the minimal root system of the sod and keep the sod from drying out. This could require watering as much as three to four times per day for short durations in order to keep the sod moist until the roots have opportunity to grow down into the soil below water, below for water. This frequent watering generally takes at least two to three weeks in order for the root system for the, of the sod to actually establish. Variants to the proposed ord, ordinances would need to be made available during those times. Our third suggestion is, um, in consideration of transplants and newly planted ornamentals. Anytime annual or perennial flowers, trees, shrubs, or vegetables are planted into the, into the landscape from seed or transplant, additional water will be needed in order to help establish that root system of the new plant. This could include the need to water one to two times per day for two to four weeks until the newly planted plants have a chance to develop a more robust root system. Depending on the number of the plants and the size of the area, landscapes and flower beds may need water with automatic sprinklers, above ground sprinklers, attached to the hose ends of, attached to the ends of hoses or watered by hand. Depending on the location of a water source, alternate watering options might be of it, might not be available or practical to implement. This is most often the case on larger commercial properties, um, and at HOAs where the automatic irrigation systems are the only water source for the flower beds, um, especially, uh, the flower beds near the driveway entrances and in the common areas. The application of this ordinance to these types of plantings should be considered, and a variance to the proposed warning ordinances may need to be made available as well. And lastly, our fourth suggestion is dur, uh, considering containers and hanging baskets. Pots, containers, and hanging baskets have a limited volume of space for roots except to establish and absorb water from. As a result, these types of gardens require more frequent watering in order to ensure there is moisture in the root zone for plants to be able to utilize, needing water as frequently as once or twice per day. While pots, containers, and hanging baskets are often hand watered, in many cases, they are also watered by irrigation systems that are tied into the property's automatic irrigation system, especially in commercial properties. Raised bed gardens also follow within a similar category in that there is limited space for root growth, and they often dry out faster than the surrounding soil, as water may be lost through the sides of the bed. So another application of this ordinance, um, should be considered, uh, for that. And I'll pass it back to Matthew to wrap it up.
Thank you. Uh, as you can see, especially when it comes to establishing new plant material, there can be the need for watering during peak times of the day where the heat is the most intense in order to, to maintain those plants. Uh, and while Abby and I can't necessarily speak to all the impacts of different watering practices might have, um, in the plants in our community, we definitely, uh, know there's a diversity of plant material all with different needs that's growing in our community. In the same way, we also can't speak to every facet of the diverse horticulture industry within Sedgwick County and the ways that the ordinances, uh, may impact their businesses or business operations. For a reference here in Sedgwick County, the horticulture industry provides a $452 million annual contribution to the Sedgwick County economy every year. During stage two, water restrictions have impacted their bottom lines as citizens try to do the right thing and conserve water. Horticulture industry consumers are definitely influenced by city ordinances set by this council, including several ordinances that don't necessarily direct the businesses themselves, but influence the, the practices of those residents. Specifically, I think many of our community members over the past year have limited or postponed their investments in their landscapes, um, including planting new trees, shrubs, and landscape plants as they're concerned about the availability of the water that they can provide to their landscapes and their ability to protect their financial investments in those products. Uh, while I'm sure this is an unintentional consequence to some of the stage two drought restrictions, city ordinances do cause real world impacts beyond what, uh, we can speak to today. And, uh, for that reason, we would suggest potentially having a roundtable discussion with some of our horticulture industry to see how some of these proposals might influence both their, their practices and, uh, some of the officers that they serve. Another impact that may need to be considered as we discuss new ordinances is the impact on use of, is the impact of use and future development of private wells in the Sedgwick County community. While private wells may not directly impact the ability of the city of Wichita to pump groundwater for the city's water supply, the number of wells that we use can greatly impact neighboring wells as well as surrounding properties in the city. Um, one of the biggest issues that we help community members face, um, here in the Sedgwick County community is well water quality, especially well water quality that's not acceptable for irrigation purposes due to high levels of salt and other contaminants in the water. Um, typically, these can damage both the plants and the soil and cause long-term irreversible damage if too much saltwater supply to those soils. Uh, one of the challenges with increased well use by the community may further decrease the water quality and, uh, also impact the water availability as more people pull from some of these shallower wells, uh, that most private well owners, that most private wells are all water from. The other thing that I don't know that Gary had a chance to speak to today was also the im, impact of this ordinance on your irrigation and some of your, your thoughts on that today as well. Um, so as we look for ways to encourage the community to conserve water, we do have a few suggestions or other rebate options that you might want to consider. Uh, we feel incentives are a strong way to encourage the community to conserve water and improve their watering practices. Um, to encourage more water conservation in the landscape, some of the incentives that we in the horticulture industry might, uh, encourage would be rebates that center around encouraging the warm season, planting of warm season sods as well as grass seeds since more warm season lawns are planted by either sods, brigs, or plugs rather than seed. We also would encourage rebate focused around equipping automatic irrigation systems with more pressure regulating parts, uh, such as pressure regulators and the valves, sprinkler heads, and nozzles. The more pressure is reduced in an automatic irrigation system, the larger the water droplets that those systems emit, decreasing the amount of water that's lost as a fine mist and carried away in the wind. Essentially, these pressure regulating pieces are typically more expensive, but they help more of that water exit the irrigation system, actually reach the soil where our plants can benefit from it. There are also different water polymer technologies that are being introduced and used in the market that can help the soil absorb and hold on to water for longer periods of time. And those are things that we are doing research down in our Hazelle Extension, uh, and Research Center to see how effective they are. We can also encourage rebates that promote drip irrigation and subsurface irrigation rather than overhead irrigation systems. This type of irrigation is generally more efficient as less water is wasted and more water is delivered directly to the soil where plants can access it with their roots. Another potential incentive would be to reduce, uh, some sort of incentive that would reduce the lawn area of a landscape by a certain percentage and replace that with either landscaping or other less water intensive uses. Again, while Abby and I have a wide knowledge of horticulture and how plants in our area, um, can grow and be impacted by watering, neither of us will claim to know it all. Uh, so I would leave a suggestion that we, again, organize a roundtable session with members of our horticulture industry to see how those ordinances may impact both their businesses and their consumer practices. Together, I think that we can improve future ordinances beyond just brainstorming that, uh, we can do and, uh, again, provide incentives to help drive water conservation in our community. With that, we'd open it up for questions and, uh, similar information we can provide you today.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Gary, can I ask you to come to the podium just for a second? I know that we have engaged the horticulture industry, um, from the beginning of this and, and had conversations. Can you just, I think it's a great recommendation from our friends at the extension. Can, just so the community knows the extensive amount of engagement, community engagement that we've done, can you just speak to that?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Councilman. We have, we need to continue those conversations, and, and I think Matthew made a really good recommendation that going forward, we want to make sure that anything we do for the future, uh, is the right thing. I will, I will tell you the conversations we've had with the industry and what I've heard, oh, what I've heard best back from the industry is their willingness and desire to adapt to our need to conserve long term. We need to continue that conversation, uh, because initially, just to be frank, we heard from some businesses who said you should, that the city should not do anything to negatively impact their business, so it's meant that they were not going to adapt or to adjust. So there's kind of be a middle ground or somewhere, and that's where I really want to get to and keep having that conversation. Because for us to be successful long term, uh, for us to protect our long-term water supply, again, I, we absolutely want to have minimize the impact to businesses, but I hope that we can evolve together and the businesses can adapt. When we first went into, last quick comment, when we first went into stage two restrictions, one of the, uh, local nurseries put out a flyer that I thought was great, and it said, we'll get you through this. Here's how we're going to do it. We've got drought tolerant materials that talk about a lot of the things Matthew talked about. It seemed like a great idea. I think that's where we all start to find common ground together is to be able to adapt at the same, same time.
Thank you so much.
So I, my question is not for you, Gary. Uh, I support all of this work and continue to work with the local companies. I did have a question for you, Matthew. So, um, given my comments at our last workshop, I heard from three or four irrigation specialists about kind of what I was saying about fescue, and I just want to know your thoughts on it. So I know you said you don't know everything, but sure, I just want to hear your thoughts. So one of the gentlemen I spoke with said, fescue is okay if you stress, like, stress the lawn a little bit. So instead of watering three days a week, he said, he worked on yards and encouraged them to water twice a week. And it did dry them out just a little bit, but when we hit drought restrictions, those lawns were fine because they weren't receiving as much water. So I wanted to know, one, what you thought about that? And then, two, if we're watering every other day, does that hurt that type of theory? Could we go to maybe watering less and stressing all of our lawn so that they can survive through that?
Great questions, and I would agree with the assessment of the irrigation penalty provided you. Um, as far as watering tall fescue, even something that needs more water, we still want to be watering slowly, deeply, and infrequently, and that includes providing areas of mini drought between watering. Our, our roots of our plant material need oxygen just as much as they need water. And so if we're constantly watering, especially every day, we push that oxygen out of the deeper levels of our soil. Some roots just don't have the ability to access it there because they can't live in, in environments without oxygen. And so, yes, by encouraging less watering of our tall fescue lawns and not watering an established lawn every day, we, we definitely should be able to have healthy tall fescue lawns without the need of any water. I think the biggest exemption to that comes into what I've been saying with, uh, the need for establishing new lawns. Uh, that's kind of a different animal where, again, you're not trying to water in the same way. You're not trying to water six, eight inches deep. You're trying to water two to three inches deep, just keep that soil surface wet, uh, for those new bedding grass seeds to be able to keep that. So, again, I would agree with that estimation. I have parts of my lawn, I have a Bermuda grass lawn personally, um, and there are areas of my lawn where my trees overhang from the neighbor's property or the fence shadows it out that I have tall fescue. I have not watered it yet this year, and it's still green and healthy. Uh, we've had lots of, of rainfall this year, so we've been lucky. Uh, but again, in a, in a hotter, drier summer like this, this drought restrictions, watering it once a week was sufficient to still maintain a green, healthy lawn. And so in my example, I can apply a lot less water than my neighbors and still have an equally competitive lawn. It may not be always quite as pristine, but it's still, I think, adequate for what the community would hope for the same as, uh, standards of their lawn to look like.
Awesome. Well, I appreciate your, uh, comments on that, and I, I think, again, to your point and what Gary's, the work Gary's been doing, I think as we all kind of work together on this weekend, get some good ideas and tips to make sure our lawns stay greener longer. But I have you be, I have not watered my lawn since we went into stage two.
Very good. Congratulations. That's awesome. Big hand, you done.
Um, yeah, I think I beat you on that one. It's probably been a couple of years. And my lawn, mostly clover, so I think that adapts pretty well. Um, I, I did want to know, um, do we have a, maybe a map or a breakdown of where the salt and contaminant areas are around the city? I know we have a number of wells offline on the south side. I think a lot of that maybe had to do with Gilbert or Mosley, um, and which has since been remediated if I'm not mistaken. I know we have a pretty good idea of the contaminant areas. Um, do we have a breakdown of where the salt areas are that make it unacceptable or irresponsible maybe to water lawns and greenery with?
We do have some information, especially on the contaminated areas, not so much on the chloride salt areas. I mean, there's specific places, especially near our well field at the Echo Spaz that we know. Uh, what happens is generally when somebody wants to put it in a well and there's groundwater testing down at that time helps us understand what is there at that point in time. But we don't probably have that specific data as far as salt contamination, as much as we do other type of contaminant. We've got a good database, we've had some good information, uh, but a lot of that we support by additional testing anytime. But a lot of that we support by additional testing anytime a well is requested to be put in.
Yeah, thank you.
And I would just agree with that saying that I think there's not necessarily a great public map. But we do irrigation quality testing through our lab up at K-Sat. And so we get a lot of reports back. So we have general ideas on the parts of town that have poor quality well irrigation water. Oftentimes they're kind of pocketed around town where everybody's pulling from that same pool of water at a similar depth. And so it kind of varies by location to location.
Is that information available on your website or where can people find that information?
That's a great question. It's not readily available on our website just for the fact that it again, it's going to vary. The water testing information is available on our website and people would like to have their irrigation wells tested for their water quality. That's definitely something we can do. And that information is on our website at sedgwick.ksu.edu. And if you scroll down to the list of options there, there's a tests and services section. And you can learn more about our irrigation water testing as well as our soil testing information.
Gary, I'm sure you're anticipating all my questions. I know each time we talk about the drought, I am always concerned about if there has been any type of uptick in people. Digging new wells to avoid having to comply with the restrictions. And I just wondered if, I mean, the last time you, that we spoke, that hadn't really happened. I just was curious if you, if you guys have seen or in other communities that have been upticks in digging wells to avoid. Following the suggested regulations for a stage two.
We looked at the, and I don't have the numbers with me, but we looked at the trends over the last 10 years. And you know, I had mentioned on a previous slide since 2021, we've had 2,000 well permits. That's not necessarily out of the ordinary. I don't know that we've seen a direct correlation of considerable number or an increase in wells since we've gone under drought restrictions. I will say again, and I'm not promoting it, but based on our analysis of the impacts. Or the fact that there is no impact to our groundwater supply at the Ecospads. We're not going to discourage domestic well use anytime soon. Because again, during, when we're in a good place and Cheney's in a good place. The more domestic wells take some stress off of our public water supply. The local aquifer can provide the water. There are folks in West Wichita. For the last year who have seen their wells go dry because they're not deep enough. So the drought is impacting, everything's dropping, right? So there's no guarantee, depending on how deep you pitch your well, and it's still going to get water. I don't know that we can point to say that folks are doing that to say avoid anything. A lot of them want to do it to avoid the cost of potable water. And to also contribute, I mean, domestic wells do contribute to conservation ultimately.
Okay, awesome. Last thing I want to talk about is trees. I know we've talked about it a little bit, but I know we have trees on hand with the city. But also the couple of nurseries that I have talked to is, you know. How do we, there is a responsibility in my opinion of, you know, private homeowners to be able to plant trees and such in their own yards. Aside from what we do and provide on the city. But. When is it okay? I don't know. I don't know if that's the right word for, you know, to be promoting tree planting. I mean, we all know the best time to plant a tree is 10 or 20 years ago. And in the last two months of all of our storms, we have lost tons and tons and tons of our canopy. And so I want to be responsible for the future too, but also be mindful of the situation that we're in now.
If I can, I think there's some misinformation that has been shared about trees. If you could repeat again, the watering requirements for trees. Because some folks have talked about a pretty simple approach with just, you know, a temp, just a small amount of watering on a weekly basis. And I'm not sure that was fully reflective of what we just heard regarding the water needs of trees, especially larger trees.
Sure, I don't mind repeating that. So like we talked about, mature trees and shrubs need about a 12 inch deep. So every three or four weeks. And that, like Matt said, that's going to be at the trunk, outside of the trunk and then outside that drip line there too. And then anything that's newly planted tree, which would be five years or less, it's going to require 10 gallons of water applied per week. So I would say if you're looking at a Monday, Wednesday or Tuesdays, Thursday, Saturday watering, you should be able to apply that amount of water in that time.
Thank you.
Oh, I stand down real quick to our proposal for the future was still allow hand watering any day. So could, could help supplement that to anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you too. Appreciate your expertise. And we'll stay close to contact with them and engage their expertise as we go forward. Certainly as we bring a recommendation to the council in August, I want to make sure that we're in staff and I think that we're, we are. One of the comments I'll, I'll talk about real quick before I move on. I've got a couple of slides and I want to wrap this up for you. Thank you again for bearing with me. One of the things we talked about, I'm going to hit on this real quick since Matthew talked about fescue. We, I met with, I have to mention, I met with Rob and Oliver's group yesterday, council members. I don't know if they were there. We pretty soon engaged them, talked about what the future looks like. And what they could help do to maybe help with longer conservation. Well, we challenged them and again yesterday to see if we could go away from fescue being deep. Well, fescue takes more water. There's situations that makes sense. In areas of my yard, I've got some massive trees and, and I do have fescue, but even at that. And my pet yard, I didn't, and you see a lot of bear spots. So, so we want to be cognizant of that. We do want to work with folks. I don't know that it's so much of an issue of maybe trying to go away from fescue. We're not going to convert existing yards. It's just really not possible without folks wanting to do that on their own. I think what our first task is. As we were going through this and getting into stage one and talking to the community, and we've seen it, I've seen proof of it. I saw it my 10 years that I worked in construction, managing projects. The problem is a lot of folks that have fescue, they water seven days a week and they water twice a day. That's the problem. That's what we've got to get away from. That's our first big step. And I, I'm confident we can get there. I think this proposal helps us get there. I think you heard that we can still have a very healthy yard by doing so. So that collective message, I think will get us there. Let me hit on a couple more things and I'll be ready to wrap this up. There's a lot of information on this slide. I'm going to hit it really quick and tell you that this is something that we'll come back to in November. When we have discussions about utility rates. Prior to going into stage two water restrictions, we talked about our true grade system. And we had contemplated the idea of what if we change the rates for tiers two and three. And as a way to incentivize conservation, that presented a lot of challenges. Mayor and council had some great questions. I would hit on a few of those today. I don't want to take a lot of time going into great detail. But we, we've continued to work with NewGen, our financial consultant at the utility. They do wonderful work across the country, working with a lot of municipalities, especially our size. So when we, when we thought about this idea, so right now. Focus on residential customers, we've got 137,000 residential customers. Everybody starts out in tier one, $3.00 in some sense for a thousand gallons. And so we, we figure out what everybody's average winter consumption is. AWC, we talked about this. So I'll just sit on this again real quick, how this works. December, January, February, March, we take the average use of those months as set as your AWC. If it's below 6,000 gallons a month, I don't know where that originated or where that first came from. I'll talk about that more in a moment. 6,000 gallons per month sets the minimum threshold for the average winter consumption. If you use 2,000 gallons a month, your average winter consumption is set at 6,000. If you use 5,500, it's set at 6,000. If you use 7,000, it's set at 7,000. So most businesses are well above that. Your average winter consumption is set what it is. The importance of average winter consumption is on the tiers. The tiers were put in place as a matter to encourage conservation. Because outpouring, if we're most folks get into those next tiers, tiers two and three discretionary. It's a, it's a means. And if you look at elasticity of demand. You live in other communities across the country, this tiered system is implemented in many, many places. It's recommended by the American Water Works Association as a way to encourage conservation. And so the fact of the matter is if you're eating more water, you get into tiers two and three based on your AWC. It costs more. So we give it, we start tier two at 6,600 gallons. So it's 6,000 plus 10%. So, so here's what happens. If you use 4,000 gallons a month. 60% of our customers use 4,000 gallons a month or less. What happens when they're watering, and it's fine, it just is what it is right now. They get to use the next 2,600 gallons up to 6,600 at tier one rates before it kicks into tier two. That is contrary, we believe, to where we were trying to go with this originally. Looking at past data, again, not exactly sure where 6,000 originated from. It could have been in the past that that was a more average use. I'll tell you, if you look at back to 2013 and the amount of water that we've treated and pumped to our systems since 2013. Has decreased fairly considerably over the last 12 years. Folks are using less water. There's more. We talked about the items that are part of rebate program. There's more efficient devices. We're using less water. Could have been that the average use in the past was 6,000 gallons a month. It's closer to 4,000 or even less than that. We talked to, and let me come back to that in just a moment. Some of the things we talked about was. If we raise the rates, the amount that you pay for tiers two and three was going to have an unfair impact on businesses. Who need additional water during the summer has nothing to do with irrigation. They need it for cooling. They need it for production during hotter months. They were going to end up paying more, impacting their business unfairly. So we stepped away from that. We talked about the idea of having separate irrigation meters. There's negative impacts to that. There's additional cost of operations for us. We look at a uniform rate for non-residential customers. It actually had the reverse impact of what we thought it might. And it gave a break to some of the bigger water users and put more of a burden on some of the lesser water users. So that's not a viable option either. We've come to the point that we think it makes sense to adjust or lower. The average winter consumption minimum based on what's being used. So don't have to settle on anything today. This will come back to you. But I would call your attention to bottom left. There's a lot of information on here. And what it shows is current minimum being 6,000 gallons. The very top left, percent of water used, 83.4% stays in block one. If you go down to the number of customers under current minimum, 6,000, 86% stay in block one. If you would go down, if we looked at the 4,000 gallon minimum, maybe just to the right of that. There would be more customers that end up in tier two, block two and block three than there are now. Which should incentivize conservation. If we look at the, at the elasticity model on this bottom left, I'll just give you the one quick example. If we went to 4,000 gallon minimum as opposed to 6,000, based on average use. We would end up saving, conserving 142 million gallons a year. That's a real number. Because what happens is if people start paying a higher rate sooner. They're more inclined to conserve and not use as much water. It's just the way it works. It works in communities all across the country. That's why this model's been successful. It's not unheard of to do that. It's discretionary water use. We don't look at it as punitive. It encourages conservation. We're not trying to make extra money. We're trying to charge a rate that makes folks use less water. That's all that amounts to. If you get to too high of a point, again, you start impacting businesses unfairly. This would have effectively no impact on businesses by changing that AWC. Because like I said, most commercial businesses are already going to use more than 6,000 gallons a month. Their average winter consumption is set as the actual numbers. This would have no impact on that. That was a lot of information. We'll talk about this more in November when we have a rates discussion. I'd be happy to get you more, more information in the meantime. This is another conservation measure we'd really like to consider. It would provide a true reflection of the water that's being used now. And the real intent of the tier structure to get to tier two when it makes sense.
If I may.
Sure.
Do we know the watering habits of those people that fit in tier one that would go into tier two? I mean, are, are we taking into account like larger families just doing normal things like bathing and running their dishwasher? Do we think most of them are actually watering their lawn? The one thing I want to avoid here is actually increasing rates for people who have a necessity. Who want to bathe every night, for example. And if you have four kids and your, your parents there or whatnot. I really want to avoid increasing the fees on them because it's already been taken to find out with their paychecks.
Understood. And very good question. That generally works itself out because that's what the four months are for, for establishing the AWC. If, if they're have high water use already, I have four kids. There was a time when we used a lot of water. And our AWC was already set above that minimum threshold. So generally it'll take care of itself. But good question. It's hard to develop that type of data for 137,000 customers. We don't want to have a negative impact, but when we look at the fact. That 60% of the users are already using 4,000 or less. I think it makes sense to consider some change to this. Good question. I want to continue to look at that. Got some staff that's done a wonderful job of breaking down this data. It's hard to get that granular, but I do want to take another look and I appreciate you asking that.
And the last thing, do we have any data that can be broken down by zip code or district perhaps to look at? What percentage of people fall under 60%?
I don't know. I think that we do have some information related to districts possibly. But I can take a look at that and see.
Okay, I appreciate that.
And I, and I do appreciate that question. I, this is just, again, trying to wrap all these things together. I know it ends up being a lot. We're not looking for ways to be difficult to, to our citizens. We're not trying to create an additional unfair burden. We're trying to find a way to incentivize water conservation first and foremost. But great question and we'll continue looking at that. Give you a quick update on our water reuse master plan efforts and then we're ready to wrap this up. We are doing a lot. We talked previously about what we're contemplating for water reuse. Stakeholder outreach and interviews are underway with numerous folks around the community. We've had discussions with state agencies regarding potable reuse. Those are very active. We met with KDHE and the Department of Ag. We will continue those conversations. I, any chance I get, I, I talk to folks at the state level so that, that they understand where we're at, what we're doing. We have a presentation, South Central Council delegation scheduled for July 31st. So they understand what our efforts look like in developing state level regulations for our potable reuse. For identifying funding options, including for the current study that's underway. We expect to have a draft implementation and pilot plan developed by the end of 2025. Just as a reminder, looking at the idea that we have 25 million gallons a day of treated wastewater. Coming out of our plant two, south end of town, going into the Ark River. We believe we have the rights to that water to capture that, to run it through advanced treatment process and create our own water supply. Our average daily demand through the course of a year is 50 million gallons a day. You can imagine the impact it would have if we could create our own water supplies to replace half of that every single day. That is our ultimate goal. It's going to be a step in approach to implementation, especially from a cost perspective. But we're trying to get there, taking small steps to get to that point. A lot more to come. Really excited things happening with that. Okay, next steps. I talked early on the fact we are remaining in stage two drought restrictions. And our goal is to stay there until we get to, all month running average is at 90%, which we predict to be next spring. Absolutely, you need to get through these next couple of hot months, probably including September. But with what's coming with the temperatures, predictions are for not a lot of precipitation. Never know what'll happen there. We're going to lose a lot to evaporation. You heard me talking about all of that. We're going to start to see decline in the reservoir. It's almost certain, but, but who knows, right? Seen some rains, got a big storm last night. Health stabilized below. So one thought here. We will be coming, I plan to. We will be coming back planning to in absence of anything changing between now and then. Bringing a recommendation to the city council on August 19th for this new plan going forward in perpetuity. Separate from our drought response plan, it would be our new norm. I know I belabor that, but I want to be very, very clear, this is our plan for the future. There would be exceptions to it, we want to be flexible with that. I think you heard Matthew and Abby talk about some reasons for that. That's why we had that in place, we want to work with folks, we want to be able to water trees, I think we can make that happen. One thought. As a possible alternative to staying in stage two. Until we get to 90% for the 12 month is to think about the idea that. If we get to September 1st and Cheney reservoir is still at 90% real time. Not 12 month, but it's in good shape. We've had some rain through the next few months to offset evaporation, maybe. One thought is if the city council approves this new plan going forward on August 19th, hopefully that happens regardless. But assuming that's approved, September 1st, we're at 90%. Maybe we implement that plan then and we lift stage two drought restriction. We would stay in stage one, I don't want to make this confusing, but we need to stay in stage one. Voluntary conservation, everything that we do is stay in place. This is kind of an artificial recommendation of the actual drought response plan. But I think it's something to consider. Because we are going to, we expect to see savings from the watering three days a week. As we get into the falls, we start seeing temperatures back off in September, October. It may be something to consider as an alternative to staying in stage two restrictions. So I know there's a lot to take in. I'll talk to you about this again on August 19th, we can obviously talk about it in the meantime. Something I wanted you to think about, certainly happy to have the discussion today. As of right now, as I walk away here today, we're still in stage two drought restrictions. That is not changing for the moment. Could be a topic for conversation going forward. Last slide. This is some additional next step. We're going to address changing, considering changing the average winner consumption with the 2026 rates presentation later this year. Council member Hall actually has some great questions, we'll have more information to come. We'll give that to you prior to the race discussion. I don't want to drop anything new on you, just want to let you know what we're looking at, what we'll consider and sort of take a look at what you talked about. We do plan to move forward with water conservation rebate revisions we talked about for 2026. Additional conservation impacts that are coming. When our new water treatment plan is operational, I just want to mention this again, you've heard me say this a lot. It provides flexibility we don't have now with the blends we can treat. Ironically, when our new plant is operational, we have challenges with our surface water supply at Cheney reservoir. We can treat 100% groundwater from the eques spades, which is the an option we do not have now with our current plan. That is a really big deal. Valley Center just broke ground on a new water treatment plant that will be operational in 2027. So they are going to need less water from us, they've got their own water rights they're going to utilize. Derby is looking to build a water treatment plant with. They're only considerable water rights that they have. They will still need some water from the city, but during the high demand months. During the hottest times of the season, they will be able to provide water to themselves for those higher demands and take off the peak. So start wrapping a lot of these things together, we really will start realizing some long-term conservation. That's going to protect our ability to be resilient well into the future. So exciting things coming, we'll provide more detail on that in the future. That was a long presentation, I appreciate you bearing with me and I certainly appreciate the questions and happy to answer anymore.
Not a question, I just want to encourage the city and the rest of the council to continue full speed ahead on the water reuse. I am somebody who thinks that droughts are going to be longer and more pronounced in the upcoming years. And I want to make sure we set the stage for the city to continue to grow and thrive in the future. When our kids, grandparents take over. So that is a program I think is going to be well worth the value.
I I just have a few, oh, Councilwoman John, I just had a few comments. Thank you, Gary and your team. Also, thank you to Matthew and Abby from K State Research and Extension. I've had the privilege of going with Gary to more than a dozen different presentations. You mentioned WABA, Greater Rich Top Partnerships coming up and we've been to homeowners associations. And and all very well received. I think the one thing that I've been the most impressed is, you know, community members, maybe in the beginning of the drought when we went into stage two, we're a bit frustrated. But everybody sees the long range goal, right? And especially the part about water reuse, people are very interested, very excited. Proud member along with council member Hall has alone the water reuse task force and and have learned a great deal. So thank you to you and all your team. I I did participate in Kansas Municipal Utilities Conference and one of the things that I've said a million times since then. Is, you know, they mentioned that you can't stop conserving. And especially as we are heading towards water reuse. The the quote that somebody from K D H E mentioned, and I think they said it when we went to K D H E in Topeka a couple of months ago. Is the most expensive water is the water you don't conserve, right? And so when we're thinking about rates and we're thinking about average water consumption for our residents and all of that. We have to remember that water conservation has to be key. And one of the big issues that we don't talk about enough is for economic development. Troy and I have had this conversation many times. When business and industries are thinking of relocating to our great city or any city. The one that gets first is your infrastructure and utilities. And if they see that we're in drought and we're not aggressively addressing it, it's going to be a concern for them that we'll raise our water rates. Because the most expensive water is the water you don't conserve. And so this is part of a bigger issue and and I really appreciate keeping it on the forefront. All that to be said, I'm going to be really hesitant about doing anything to take us out of stage two until we get to that 90%. I I think that it's mis-messaging, I've been monitoring the weather as I know many of us have. We're getting ready to go into brutal temperatures. August is our hottest month of the year, September can be quite warm. I just, everybody right now is kind of in the mode of conservation and knowing what they need to do. And I'm hesitant, we get rain and then it changes and then oops, we don't get rain. So I'm just going to be very conservative on this issue. Yesterday, when we were at WABA, we were talking with the group and there was a landscape architect there. And he was talking about one day a week watering really is enough for most landscaping. And so, you know, I think there's a lot of expertise on the side of this. So again, thank you for your work, looking forward to more conversation. But I'm going to be very conservative about coming out of stage two. Thank you.
Yeah. I had two questions and some thoughts. First, I apologize because normally I would send you a question like this beforehand. But have you seen any change in the level of the equus spades from the recent rains? I know the ASR pushes water in there from. Forget the name of that river up north, but have we seen any increase in going in with all the additional flooding?
Yeah, I don't know, but I can find out. We the to get a true reading on the level of the equus spades is a little bit more challenging than you think it would be. But well, I I do want to look into that. One of the. And this was mentioned in the state water task force kickoff meeting yesterday that. We are very fortunate compared to Western Kansas, Neogalala, that the equus spades aquifer is more naturally recharging. Our recharge efforts with various our projects over the years has added considerably to that. But even when we're not recharging artificially, the well, and when we're not recharging with our project. The Little Ark River still helps recharge the aquifer. That's one of the reasons why it stays where it's at. I don't have a current level, but if we get that, I'll get to that information.
Okay, appreciate that. Second question, something I saw this morning, brought this to mind. Is there any way we can send a notice or suggestion to people who have irrigation systems to? Keep them off during a rain event? Or maybe the day after a significant rain event? Because this morning I saw we can water on Tuesdays in my segment of town. And I saw several sprinklers going, but we had some good rain last night and it was just kind of a, maybe a suggestion would be nice in that.
I think that is, and I appreciate you saying that. I'd made myself a note of that earlier to someone else mentioned it too. I think that's the part that we have undersold in our messaging and that we really, really need to work on. You know, I talked about the whole idea of trying to limit watering when it's 100 degrees outside in the middle of the day. There are some some times and and Matthew talked about that, especially depending on if you've got, you know, landscaping, that that's what needs water. But if we set that part aside. Oh yeah, we hear a lot, we see it a lot, even if you're on a well, it doesn't make any sense for irrigation system to be running while it's raining. We do have as part of a rebate program rain sensors. But I thank you for that because I do think their messaging going forward, we need to focus on it more than we have and we will do that.
Appreciate it. So thoughts wise, I like the direction that you've presented. We've talked about that quite a bit as well, I'm supportive there. I like council member Tuttle, I probably won't be supportive of the recommendation. Just I think we should stay in stage two until the metrics actually show that we hit stage one. I know that there's folks out there that see Cheney being where it's at and they just want to come to stage one. But I I think we should stick to stage two. And at some point when we hit stage one, then implement the recommendations that that you've set for. I'll probably say that again on the 19th, I know you said it's coming toward or coming for this box. But I just think we should stay in stage one until we hit the metrics that we set for stage one. And then at that point, I think the recommendations of what you've said going forward are the right thing. I'm appreciative of keeping this at the forefront and keeping people's minds focused on conservation going forward. I think that's the right thing to do right now, so I am supportive of that direction. This has been a really good conversation and appreciate our friends at K State Extension Office always sharing information. I learned a lot last year and I think those watching today and how this will be reported out will learn something as well.
Thank you.
I'll just add a couple of quick comments. First and foremost, stage one started January of 2023. It's a reminder that the conversation can always be top of mind if we make it a focus. And I know that strategic communications has tried that. I would encourage a very focused strategic communications plan since education really is a focus area on this. On how to move forward with conservation conversations. And I think that that is what I would encourage strategic communications to work with public works on. Instead of just, I know that we had currently have save wichita water.com. But I don't know when that started, but it was really emphasized in 2024 last year. However, again, a reminder, stage one of the drought started January of 2023. And so I think that if we keep focusing on this conservation conversation continuously. That's how we get community to have buy-in of being part of that solution. So my suggestion is really working with strategic communications on having not just one offs or a WABA meeting or a. Porticulture industry meeting, one offs, but rather can we have more of a focused and. So that everyone knows in quarter three, we will always have this type of conversation. In quarter four, we will have this type of conversation. Because as I'm looking at the calendar right now. August slash September, we'll talk about concert, the conservation plan that you'll bring forward on August 19th. Which by the way, everyone, August 19th is also a public hearing for the budget. The budget will be adopted the following week. So then in quarter four, we will talk about water rates. And hopefully we'll talk about the new water treatment plant being fully operational. So I think that having a quarterly. Conservation conversation is exactly what we kind of need in this, in a in a plan. So that again, it continues to be top of mind.
And you, I I agree. Well, thank you all, I would thank you all for for being good partners with us throughout this. We're not done, but I'm close to being done. There's effort from from folks who want us to be done, but we've got a long ways to go. Thank you for your support, thank you for it. I want to thank my staff, we've done a tremendous amount of work to keep us on track to get us to this point. They've done a lot of research with what's been done in Oklahoma City. Looking at options and ways to to encourage conservation. So without them, we'd be in a lot different place. So there'll be more to come. I'm always happy to answer questions if you've got anything in the meantime, it's the things that I took away from today. They'll get more information to you based on the questions that you ask, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary. Mayor, that's all we have.
Thank you very much, Gary, Matthew, Abby and city manager for the workshop today. A reminder, we will have a meeting next Tuesday. It is an en banc meeting. And that en banc basically means we'll have different bodies of elected officials coming together. And this will be the first time we will have an en banc with USD 259, Cedric County and the city of Wichita. This is a follow-up conversation to the community town hall, which was hosted at the beginning of June. So that's the next step. Thank you very much, see you on Tuesday.
Mayor, just a reminder, that meeting is going to be at the Kansas Leadership Center, Matt, in this room.